Good evening. And behalf of the League of Women Voters of Houston Education Fund, I'd like to welcome you to Candidates with Conversations with the Candidates for District G. My name is Rita Hicks. I'll be one of your hosts this evening. I'd like to introduce my co-host, John Canaleskoreczynski.
Thank you, Rita.
There he is. Tonight, we will be talking to the candidates for District G, as I mentioned. All of the candidates running for that position receive an invitation from the League of Women Voters of Houston. The ones appearing this evening are the ones that accepted that invitation. Tonight, we will be hearing from Greg Travis and Sandy Mullins-Mojer. The other thing I'd like to mention, just before we get started with our first guest, is that you can watch this live now. You can also watch it on the League of Women Voters Vimeo channel about two days from now if you want to go back and review any of the information about the candidates for District G. And also be sure to check out our Voters Guide at Vote401.org. Let me turn it over to John to introduce our first guest.
Thank you, Rita. Well, Greg, welcome.
Thank you.
Greg Travis is an accomplished attorney and West Houston business owner. He has never lost a trial in 23 years of practice. He is a longtime District G resident and property owner, and has also maintained his law office, the Travis Law Firm, PC, in the district for the last 15 years. Greg was an officer in the United States Air Force and received jet pilot training. He holds undergraduate degrees from Westminster College in Business and Philosophy with concentration in Economics. He understands budgets, financial statements, and fiscal reports, and will use his skills to ensure that taxes do not rise as services are provided. Greg graduated from the University of Texas School of Law, where he was notes editor for the Texas Law Review. Active in our community, Greg has taught business law at Houston Community College. He has been a member of Justice for All, a group dedicated to criminal justice reform, served as its membership director, and also served as its board director along our current Governor Greg Abbott. Greg has served as an instructor and coach for De Pelge Children's Center and volunteers for Chain Reaction Ministries, which provides bicycles for those who need them. Greg is a member of Mensa, Gulf Coast Mensa, and St. Luke's United Methodist Church. Thank you for being with us, Greg.
Well, thank you for having me.
So, we like to start off with our district candidates with something that, you know, is on the mind of everyone who's looking at these hyper-localized elections, right? A little slice of our city.
Right.
Which we want to know, what is the biggest challenge facing your district? And how would you go about solving it?
The biggest challenge facing the district actually happens to be the challenge that's facing the entire city. We are in a crisis, a fiscal crisis, a crisis that we have not seen in some time, but it's been coming for 20 years. We are now $3.3 billion in debt, and that does not count the pension issues. That's another $3 billion in debt. And actually, if you think about it, it might be $5 billion. And the reason for that is that right now, we are planning on having an 8.5% return for our pension, but we're not going to have that in the market this year. If we go down to a 7.5% return, that ends up being a $5 billion budget deficit. So, right now, we are being crushed. We have maxed out our credit cards, our roads are in disrepair, we don't have enough proper drainage, and that's because the city's been mismanaged for the last 20 years. We need to now change it. And so, I think that's the big crisis that we're facing, is the fiscal issue, which then all other issues are secondary, but just as important. Again, the roads, the drainage, the police, these are the issues that are going to rely upon how we deal with the fiscal crisis.
So, there's no specific challenge to voters on the west side that you can say, "I'm looking at your neighborhood and your neighborhoods, and this is what I see." It's the fiscal crisis, or as you term it, the crisis, the fiscal situation, the challenges that face the city?
Well, we've got issues. We've got the bus lanes in basically in Post Oak, that's a concern. We've got the Gessner widening, that's a concern. These are concerns, but I think when we look at those, and while they are concerns to the people in those areas and should be addressed, and those people need to be brought into discussion so they have some effect on that, again, the entire city, the fiscal issues was crushing us. And so, while those are areas that are important, the bus lane issue is important to the Galleria area, it's not important to the Kirkwood or Eldridge area. My area is actually a fairly large area. I've broken it down into sort of five sub-districts, because each one has its own special, unique issues. It's like, you know, the River Oaks, a lot of people think that's where the wealthy live, they don't have any problems there. Well, their streets and their drainage are miserable, and we're talking 1930s infrastructure. They need work done on their areas, just as much as the people out there in the Eldridge area need the work done out in that area. So, there are sub-areas, but like I said, I think for the whole city facing this, and what we need is we need somebody who's going to address this fiscal crisis and be strong enough to stand up to the insiders and say, "No, no more, no more spending. We need to solve it now."
So, we've touched on some of the infrastructure problems in your district, and then obviously, we know there's aging infrastructure around the city. What I'm curious about is, how do you think the city should tackle those infrastructure issues, and how should we pay for it?
Good, that's a good point. There's a lot of people out there that are not happy with the Rebuild Houston. I'm not happy with Rebuild Houston, but it's actually, in concept, a good concept. It's been implemented improperly. Our current mayor has not properly implemented the program. And I tell people, I said, "You know, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. If you look at Greece, you would think that capitalism and free markets aren't any good." But I believe in capitalism and free markets. And I say the same thing with Rebuild Houston. There are aspects about it. I don't like the drainage fee necessarily. I don't like the way it was put on the ballot, and I don't like the worst-first scenarios when it comes to deciding which roads need attention. We don't need to have the worst-first objective standard. I think most people understand when they drive down a road, which roads are bad and which ones aren't. But, we do need to start paying down our debt. I mean, we've maxed out our credit card. Rebuild Houston allows us to do that. Again, I'm not selling us on it. I would like to modify it, change it, work with it, but I think the concept, which is pay as you go, pay down debt, is a good concept. Plus, right now, our current budget, the general fund, has about $2.2 billion in revenue, but we're going to end up being about $140 million in excess of that, our expenses. 70% of that is eaten up by the police and the fire. So, when we look at this, we don't have a whole lot of money in that budget to put into the roads. Rebuild Houston does that. We're putting $100 billion into the roads right now, and we'll eventually put $400 billion. Right now, we have a depreciation in our roads. We have 16,000 lane miles. I'm not going to talk about the drainage, I'm just talking about the lane miles. We have 16,000 lane miles. Out of that 75% are in disrepair. We have, with drainage and with roads, we have $500 million a year in depreciation, and we're only putting $100 million into it, which means we have a deficit of $400 million. Doesn't take a genius to know that we are behind the eight ball in this one. So, what we've got to do is pay down our debt, and by the way, our debt equals about $425. That's what our payments are right now, about $425. So, if we pay that down and put that money in with the other $100 million, we now are equaling the $500 million. And I think that's the best way of doing it. The alternative is, and I don't like the alternative, the alternative is going out there issuing bonds, but then how do you pay up for bonds? With taxes. And I'm not for taxes, I'm not for increased taxes. Plus, my district is a very wealthy district. We have some of the highest valuations. If that's going to happen, the bonds are sold, my district will pay a disproportionate amount of those taxes. And of course, as a district councilman, I cannot be for that.
Well, continuing with the conversation about infrastructure and transportation, we'd like to know what your vision for public transportation is?
Well, along the roads of Metro, is that what we're talking about?
Public transportation as you see it.
Okay. I don't see rail. I know people like rail, they want rail, they think rail's the way to go. The problem with rail is, once you set rail down and you fix rail, if the populations move, or the people move, the rail doesn't follow them. So, I think with public transportation, I think we should stick with the bus lanes. I think we should work with Metro on this, because I'll tell you, looking at a lot of the buses, they run empty. They run empty. I think we need to be evaluating these services for the value, for what do we get for that? Because just putting a bus down a road that serves three or four people isn't sufficient. I know that we're big under these, I just drove down here, and I ran along a rail line all the way down here, along Scott Street, and this, as I turned up here. And it's nice, it's nice to have that, but I didn't see anybody on the rail. And so, when I look at this, I'm thinking, what is the value that we're getting for this? Because we're putting millions and millions of dollars in it, because we, as a city, put money into Metro, and of course, Metro puts it in the rail. So, I think we need to stick with the buses, stick with the bus lanes. I think we need to promote them better, let people know what the schedules are, and stick to the schedules. I have no problem with having large buses that go from outer areas, from outside Houston or to the edges of Houston, in to commute the various employees who are working downtown, working in the Galleria. I think those make sense, but again, I don't think we need to go to rail.
And you mentioned earlier that there was some talk about buses in your district in terms of the Post Oak area. Could you talk a little bit more about what your vision for public transportation in that area is?
Well, in the Post Oak area? Or everywhere?
Sure, in District G.
Again, the problem I have with this, with the bus lanes, is when people go down to the Galleria on Post Oak, they're going down there to shop or to eat. They're not going to take their packages on a bus, they're not going to take it on a train, they're going to put it in their car. Most people there like their cars, they're going to drive their cars. We need to be thinking in terms of the cars there, because people, we're trying to change behaviors, but we really should be accommodating the behaviors that exist. And I think that when we try to change somebody, make them leave their car and go to a bus, we're failing, because people aren't going to do that. The people that go down there to the Galleria, go down to Post Oak, go to Memorial City, or go to Uptown City Center, these are people that are going to shop, they're going to take their packages, they're going to put them in the trunk of their car or the back of their SUV, they're going to go grab something to eat, and they're going to enjoy their time there, not worrying about a bus schedule. So, let me say one thing about the public transportation that I wanted to mention. It's not public transportation, but it's along the same line. It's Uber, and the Lyft system. They're competing with the cabs. I'm for that. I love competition. I think Uber's doing a good job. There's some issues with some of the checks, on the background checks. I think we need to be serious about that. But we talk about public transportation, that's also public transportation, because people are taking cabs from the airport to their houses, and it's costing $80. And honestly, if you use an Uber, you can do it for $20. And if Uber's, if these people are making money on Uber and everybody's happy, why shouldn't the rest of us be happy?
So, I know this is an issue in your district, but citywide, we have some significant issues with our schools. We have issues of overcrowding, we have issues of underperformance. I'm curious what your thoughts are on how we should address those issues with our public schools?
Well, I'm not running for HISD, so I'll tell you, I haven't given that a whole lot of thought. I think a big issue with our schools being overcrowded is we're essentially a sanctuary city. I'm opposed to that. I'm not opposed to legal immigration, I am opposed to illegal immigration. I do think we need to clamp down on that. I think that could alleviate some of the overcrowding that we're having in the schools. As for the actual schools themselves, whether some need to be built, others, I know that there's been a lot of schools that have been shut down because they don't have the students. And I know other schools that are being, they have their, I guess you call them trailers. So, you drive by, you see two or three trailers, and tomorrow, you'll see four or five trailers, and that's how they expand. I think HISD needs to look into that, because I tell you, when you look at your tax bill, half your money goes to HISD. The city's only about 50% of what the HISD is spending, and I don't understand why they're spending so much. I'd have to look into their books to see where I could save some money, but again, that's an HISD question.
Interesting. Well, the economy's an issue, always, of course, but we'd like to know that in light of recent oil shocks and layoffs in the energy industry, what role do you think the city of Houston can play in diversifying our economy and the industries here?
Well, I think the city has been diversifying, and I think market forces will do that. I'm a big believer in free markets, and I think the markets decide. So, those industries that are waning are waning for a reason, and the people that are losing jobs there will find jobs in other industries. Now, is there transition for that? Sure. Do people maybe need re-job training? Yes. I think that's a good job for HCC to do. Instead of opening up new areas in Mumbai, India, or Qatar, I think we need to be focused on helping people retrain here in Houston. But as for the city, I think the best thing we can do is make it so that it's a good place to open up a business and be an entrepreneur. And I think with that, we need to worry about the permitting requirements. If you get on the Houston website, and you go through all the permits that are required to open up a business, you just go through it, and through it, and through it, and through it. I'm not going to exaggerate, it probably took me an hour to go through this as I was streaming through, looking at all these permitting requirements, permitting fees. It overwhelms people. You have to be a lawyer to understand it. You shouldn't have to be a lawyer to understand it and open up a business. And I think that's the best way, because most businesses, I think, what is it, six out of 10 job creations in America are started by a small business? That's what we should be encouraging. And I think we need to be encouraging the entrepreneurs, and part of that is making sure they don't have to fight red tape and work with the people at City Hall. I mean, it's not so much the City Hall necessarily, as the bureaucracy in the city. I've heard horror stories, I myself have been involved in some of the horror stories. Trying to get through to the mid-level people, it's impossible. You know, if I ran my business the way the city runs its business, I'd be out of business. And I know everybody else out there who does private business would be as well. But the difference is, I can hire and fire people. Somebody screws up and doesn't do something right, they don't give the proper service to my customers, they're gone. They can't do that in the city. But when the people call in to get help so they can start their business, so that they can be the entrepreneur they want to be, then those people need help, as opposed to the runaround. And I think we need to focus on that.
So, you mentioned sort of the way our city government works, and as you know, we have one of the strongest, strong mayor systems in the country. I'm curious, with that limitation on power for members of city council, how do you see yourself affecting change within the constraints of our government system?
That is the key, isn't it? That's the question. We all sort of know what we need to do, it's just, can we do it? A lone city councilman doesn't have the power to do that by themselves, unless they can build a consensus, unless they can get other people to come along. Number one, I think I'm a likable person, so I'm hoping that will hold me in good stead with the other city councilmen. One of the things I'm proudest of is that it's now 24 years, I've never lost a trial. And what that means is that I get to go up in front of, and I don't do car accident cases, I do commercial litigation, so we're talking high-dollar amounts. But I get to go up in front of a jury of 12 men and women, and then within two to three weeks, I get to convince them of my case, my client's case. I get to get them to win them over to my side, and I've done that successfully now, never lost, and there's a reason for it, because I know how to bring them around. The other thing that happened to be is, I'm a certified mediator. I've had a number of mediations in my life, I can't even count how many, but it's in the hundreds. I've been involved in hundreds of mediations, and I know how to bring the parties together, and I know how to solve the problems. So, with that said, what I intend to do is work with every city councilman who's on council with me, as well as the mayor, develop a good rapport, and then hope to educate them, the way I'm educating myself, on these issues, on the importance of addressing them, as opposed to just kicking the can down the road. As I look at this right now with this fiscal issue, it's a swamp. The swamp at City Hall needs to be drained. I'm not an insider, I'm an outsider. I plan on coming in and fixing the problems.
Well, with the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance now on the ballot, this was passed by city council, but now is a hot topic again. And we would like to know if you support the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance, and why or why not?
I do not support it. There's a multitude of reasons, and I'll set forth as many as I can in the time we have. I went through the whole 35 pages. I went through it as a lawyer. As a lawyer, it's a lawyer's dream, if you want to sue people, okay? If you want to defend people, well, it's probably a dream too. I'd probably make a little bit of money off this. That's not the way it should be. It's bad for business. It's drafted horribly. There's a number of ambiguities in there, and I'm going to give you one example. They talk about military status, and they discuss that you cannot discriminate based on military status. They try to define it as military service, but that's not the common meaning of what status is. I was in the Air Force for a number of years. I have military service. Somebody who's serving right now has military service. But somebody who's not served still has military status. Their status is, they're not military. So, there is the rub there. The language that's used there is ambiguous, and so, as it is, it would be litigated. And they would probably still lose it, but the fact is, even if you lose it, you're still going to cost somebody $30,000, $40,000 defending it. Well, that's not what businesses need to be doing. That's what stifles our economy. So, there's a number of other areas in there that do that. Even the process itself, where you turn it into an inspector general, then the inspector general investigates, and then you turn it into the city, the city attorney, and the city attorney prosecutes. Our city attorney needs to be doing other things besides that. And we don't need to be sick in the city attorney on businesses. There's also redundancies with federal law. I don't think it's needed. I think there's plenty of laws on the federal level that will protect people. And then the other thing, and it just comes down to it, and especially in my area, but I think most people have a problem with the fact, and I know Sidman says, "This doesn't do it," but it is. When you read it, and you actually read what it allows, it does allow men who think they're women to go into a women's restroom. And I bet you, it would allow women who think they're men to go into a men's restroom. That's the corollary. You know, I've always thought XX and XY, you know, and this is the way it is. We have a men's room and a women's room. If we want to make a third room, that's fine, let's make a third room. But there's a men's room and there's a women's room, and I don't understand that. And I'll tell you, I've got friends who are on the far right and those on the far left. I've got them throughout the spectrum, and there's a lot of people all the way across that are offended by that.
Well, as someone who's a member of Mensa, I'm sure you understand that gender is more complicated than XX and XY. You're a smart enough man to know that. I do want to make clear to viewers, something that you mentioned when you first started, which is litigation, which is, there isn't a mechanism to sue people. A private citizen can't sue someone. So, I just want to make sure that viewers understand that you, as an attorney, couldn't file a lawsuit
That's not-
-under the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance.
When I read the ordinance, I think I can. When I read the ordinance, if you are in violation of a law, and this is imposing some, not just civil penalties, but criminal penalties, you can be fined, $5,000 to $5,000, but somebody's going to use that to say, "You violated this law, you are now violating my rights." So, the fact is, we might think it's not going to be used that way, it will absolutely be used that way. In fact, I don't know many laws that aren't used that way.
But the mechanism in the law is to report these things to the inspector general, and the inspector general takes it from there?
Well, that's the process. That's the process.
Right.
But, if they don't do anything with it, the inspector general doesn't do anything with it, the person can sue on their own, because it's still an ordinance, you can't discriminate. If they feel that they were not done, because what that is, is just administrative function. But if you don't like the way it's being handled at the administrative level, you can go in outside that.
Well, it's an interesting lawyer's opinion.
So, I'm going to shift just a little bit from law over to law enforcement. And obviously, this has been the law enforcement's relationship to communities, a very hot topic lately, sometimes with tragic results. So, I'm curious what your view is on how we can improve the law enforcement relationships with communities of color, the LGBT community, and the community in general in Houston?
Okay. I support the police. I have some issues, but I support the police. And let me say, I think that they are outmanned a lot. We have right now about 5,280 police officers. We used to have 5,400. We used to spend $440 million 10 years ago for 5,400. We now spend almost $900 million for less officers. The population has grown, the number of officers have not. We have a number of officers who are flying desks, they're not out there on the streets. I always think that the best way to police is the broken windows policy, and I still believe that, it keeps the crime down. If you're out there in the community, you're being visible, and you're out there interacting, crime stays low and people get to know you. If you're driving around in a police cruiser, you're up in a desk somewhere, you're not out there with the people. So, I'd like to encourage that. I know there's been talk about people putting more police on the streets, spending another $750 million or so. We don't need to do that. What we need to do is take some of the police that are already on the desks, we have too many, too much bureaucracy there, too much paperwork, we need to transfer some of them. We've got about 2,000 people flying a desk. And with that, if we can take 33% of those, just 33%, we will put about 600 officers on the street, just like that, no change. Is it as simple as that? No, it's not as simple as that, but yet, it sort of is. That's the concept, it needs to be implemented, it's going to take some time, but that's the way to do it. Now, working with people of color and working with LGBT community, I'm not sure, I don't know the interactions there. I mean, I know what's going on nationally, I know we just had an officer shot out there. I know there's a number of people who are thinking it's a black-blue issue. I don't see it as that way. I see that the police are actually protecting the citizens, and the citizens they're protecting most happen to be in underdeveloped communities, because there's a lot of crime there. I don't see police officers in my community. We don't have them. We actually have to pay extra for constables. The problem I've got in District G, we don't have police officers. We don't have the police there. We see one a month, and they're driving through. So, what we do in our communities is, everybody has to pay extra. We pay an extra $700 in my subdivision for police that we've already paid the city. Now, I count that as a tax, so I have a problem with that. I'd like to see police officers in my area as well. And the reason for that is, because everybody says, "Look, police go where the crime is." I'm like, "Yes, but crime goes where the police are not." And so, if you don't have police in your community, then the crime's going to come in.
So, just to inform the viewers at home, our second guest has not yet arrived, and so, we're going to continue talking to Mr. Travis until our next guest arrives, if she arrives. So, John, what's your next question for our guest?
Oh, they get tougher now, huh?
Round two.
Oh, Lord.
No.
No, they certainly, we certainly appreciate you being here with us tonight.
For sure.
And it's been a pleasure talking with you. We do want to cover a number of topics, and we would like to talk about pensions. You've mentioned the pensions several times tonight, and we'd like to know what your plan is in terms of how the city addresses its pension liabilities.
It's getting more complicated as we get into tonight.
Well, we've got plenty of time.
We've got about 30 more minutes, but it's still going to take longer. But let's start with this. I believe in defined contribution plans. I think we need to move to defined contribution plans immediately. Now, I'm also, I understand that people have already made decisions or commitments in their lives based upon what they expect. I believe in upholding contracts. I believe in living by your agreements. I didn't make these agreements. The prior city council did, and I don't really like them. With that said, I would live with the agreements for those who are currently serving the police, the municipal, and the fire. But from here on out, all new hires need to be defined contribution. Number one, that makes us pay as we go. We are unfunded, and we're being more unfunded every day. There's an, it came out on TV last night, and it's actually out today, the Armored Foundation came out and talked about how much we're underfunded. Back in 2001, we were unfunded by $300 million. Today, we're unfunded by over $3 billion, okay? So, in that short amount of time, look what we've had. It's not that hard. If you think about it in terms of your own credit card payments, if you're supposed to make a payment of, let's say, $100, and you only make a payment of $50, well, then an extra $50 you did not pay goes to the next month, you got interest, and then the next month, you've got to pay $100 plus an extra $50. Now, you're at $150. If you still pay $50, then you've got the $100 that carries over, now it's just one big snowball, and it's a mess. And it needs to stop, it needs to stop now. And everybody says that, every politician who runs says it every year, and they just don't do it. But we don't have the luxury of this anymore. We are where Chicago was 10 years ago, okay? We actually have, and this is the thing, is not just pensions, but we have more debt than Detroit has, or had when they went bankrupt. Fortunately, we have more revenue right now, but that may not last. So we need to tackle this right now. And part of that happens to be is going to define contribution immediately. And the other part then is just funding the pensions. If you've made a commitment, you need to live by a commitment. And I think, you know, there's, there's more to it. And I say this because we may need to, well, first of all, on the fire, you need to have local control. Okay? And with the police, the municipal, we have meet and confer, but that then heads up there. We, we need to make sure that we, as a city, have absolute control over our contracts and our pensions with our employees. And then we need to be real with, with the, with our employees, and they need to be real with us. When I met with the firemen, I told them, I said, look, guys, you guys think about this defined contribution, because if you go this way and you're 30 years old, in 20 years from now, you may not have this. I mean, you may be in front of a bankruptcy court, and the bankruptcy court's going to decide your, your retirement. But you're not going to be 30 then, you're going to be 55, maybe 60. So this is something we've got to address now for these guys who are 30 or 40. The guys that are 60, they're retiring, again, they've made the commitment, they've made the agreement, we need to live by it. But the people that are coming in now, we need to save it for them.
Thank you. So you were mentioning earlier that you think that Houston should do what it can to attract new businesses. As you know, a number of major, particularly, energy businesses have built new campuses around Houston, but not actually in Houston. So I'm curious to hear what your thoughts are on what the city can do to try and attract the Exons and the FMCs to look at Houston as a city rather than just the suburbs.
Well, I think a lot of that happens to be, you know, the land price. Because when you go to build something that large, you need to look at a large space. And there's not a whole lot of those spaces around anymore. There's a little bit out in West Chase area, but of course, it's all bought up. But the fact is, there's not much the city can do with that unless they want to do, you know, eminent domain. And I don't think that's the proper purpose or use of eminent domain there. That, to me, I think that should be used rarely and very seldom. I think that that's the crux of it. I'm not sure what we can do other, I mean, I don't believe in giving tax abatements. That's not to say there can't be some of that. But, you know, you hate to give away your revenue base just to get a business in, so you can get a revenue base. I just don't see the purpose of that. I think we can do a better job on marketing and selling the city. I think we have, and the people are doing a good job on that. There's just two things the city has that goes against it every, every year, and that's heat and humidity, okay? And we can't do anything about that. It's a selling point in the winter, it's a losing point for us in the summer. But I think what really sells for Houston is it's a great city. It's a city where anybody can come into Houston and succeed. They can come, there's opportunity for anybody who's willing to work hard and, you know, do the job right. Uh, I think that's the selling point for this reason. The big companies that are coming in to hire want those type of people. They want that attitude. They want the person who has a can-do attitude. You know, America used to have that attitude, I don't know if it has anymore, but Texas still has it, and Houston still has it. It's the we can do anything. It's what makes us a great city, it's what makes us a great state. I think the, the companies coming in see that, they know it. The fact that they might be on the outskirts, might be in the county, or in Fort Bend County or whatever, they're still going to, you know, get our workers who are living in Houston, because people can do reverse commutes. We can still sell the quality of life, I mean, we're having a really good job with that. If you go up to New York, you go up to Chicago, their commutes are huge. And it's like hours in traffic, or you gotta take the train. Or you live in small apartments. You know, here, you can have a nice house with a nice backyard, with your two dogs, two children, have a barbecue at night. I mean, it's a nice life. And that's almost in every part of the city. And, and there are areas, I just drove through, coming here, there are areas that are still undeveloped down here in the south side. Not in my district, my district's pretty well-developed. Like I said, there's not a whole lot of land that's available there to put anything. And you're not going to put industry there, you're not going to put in big plants, or you're not going to put large buildings there, other than commercial buildings. Uh, and I think we're doing that, by the way. I think on the commercial side, we're getting a lot of people coming in on that side. I mean, you know, we are the energy capital, we have the energy corridor. And they're still building out there, the cranes are still up there. And I just think it's exciting for that. So I'm not really sure if we need to be doing a whole lot more than just what we are doing.
Well, I think that you touched on something which everyone in Houston is proud of, which is opportunity. That we, we do have economic opportunity here, and that it's a working city. It's, you, you come here, not for our scenic mountains, although some of us do think it's beautiful, but because of the chances that you have and the diversity that we have. But Houston does rank 15th worst in, in the country, major cities, for income inequality. So what are your plans to bridge the gaps caused by that fact?
Yeah, you're probably not going to like my answer. I don't have a problem with income inequality. And the reason is, I aspire for more, okay? I came here to Houston out of law school. I had less than $100 on me. I actually had to borrow money to buy shirts and underwear, okay? Didn't have any money, didn't have a car. Yeah, I was coming from law school and I had a good job. But the fact is, is I had no money. I worked my way through college, worked my way through law school, either through scholarships or 100% of my effort. I was working 40 hours a week. I was a dock worker, working 40 hours a week while I went to college and then law school. Why did I work that? By the way, when I was in law school, I slept in a closet with my head that far from the toilet, because I just lived in efficiency, because that's all I could afford. Fast forward 20 some years, it's a whole different ballgame, okay? And, and I'm, I'm doing pretty good. But the fact is, I worked, I worked hard. And one of the things it did for me is I wanted better. I used to have these little Lamborghinis on my wall in my little efficiency apartment. I looked at them, I looked at them, I wanted Lamborghini so much. I still don't have one, by the way. But I'm still working, because I'd like to get one someday. I'm sure the day I can afford one, I probably won't buy it, because there's other things to buy instead. You know, I do a lot with rescue animals, I'd really give the money there. But the fact is, I want to aspire for this. Not just for the sole fact of having money, but for the sole fact of what you can do when you get it. When you have it, you can give to charity, you can do the rescue groups, you can do all these things that you can't do otherwise. You know, I drive through River Oaks, and I look at their houses, and I love those houses. I don't mind if they make more money than me, if they're working harder than me, they, they deserve it. I don't like the class envy, I don't like the envy. As long as nobody keeps people down, as long as it's not as if there's a ceiling where people can't buy their own effort and hard work, then we need to aspire for more. And it may not, some people may not want that. Some people may say, you know what, I don't want to work 80 hours a week to get there. What I want to do is have a quality of life. I want to be at home with my children at 5 o'clock, I want to work this way. There's nothing wrong with that either. Again, as long as the government and the people are not being kept down, the government's not keeping the people down and keeping them from aspiring and achieving. And that's the goal. I, I always think that people should aspire to be better in every way. Be better, not necessarily materially, but spiritually, health-wise. I'm trying to lose weight, okay?
Are we all?
And that's the problem with Houston, by the way. We have really good restaurants. I came to Houston at 180, and now I'm 250. I'm telling you, it was not because of my own home cooking. But it, it's one thing Houston's known for, it's the restaurants. But, you know, we aspire, we aspire to, to make ourselves better in other ways. And when I see somebody who's thinner than me, I'm like, yeah. Especially when they lost weight. A friend of mine, Steve Finkelman, lost a lot of weight. And I looked at him, and I was like, my God, you look great. He lost it over the last three years. And I was like, that inspires me. I'm not jealous at the fact that he's lost the weight, and I haven't. It just inspires me now to work harder at losing the weight. So that's why I'm saying this, when we talk about any income inequality, we have to look at why it is. We need to look at whether it's as a result of government interference, or whether it's just a matter of market forces.
So you're not at all concerned about social unrest, or gaps in educational opportunity, or different things that might especially come out of income inequality?
I am always worried about gaps in education quality. I think an educated population, educated workforce, educated people are required for good democracy and good government. Uh, I think our schools have failed us in many respects. Some because the schools are just trying, they just can't do it. And others, the schools just aren't even trying. I used to be a substitute teacher. That was one of the things I worked my way through school with. My mom and dad were both teachers. And I saw education through a different light than other people have. In our family, my brother, sister, and I both have, all three have law degrees. We aspire for education. I think education's the way out of poverty. I think education is the way, now, don't get me wrong, because there's a lot of people going to college right now, they're going in debt to $100,000, and they're not walking off with a $100,000 education. Uh, I tell a lot of my friends, I said, if I was going again today, I'd probably be an electrician or a plumber. I just paid a plumber almost as much per hour as I charge as a lawyer. And I said, you know what, he didn't have to go through all that. Now, he had to go through a lot of training, believe in me, but he didn't have to go through all that education he went through. And I thought, you know, that's, you make a good job. You can make $700,000 a year being a plumber or an electrician. They just don't, we don't have enough of them. But, you know, you need to be skilled in that, in that regards. And so that's where you need your education, so that you can actually become a master electrician and a master plumber. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
So it seems to me like you have a pretty clear vision of what a healthy, thriving Houston is to you. So what I'm curious is, when you, if you were elected and you're on our city council and you're working on making policy to serve your constituents, what would you say are your top three quality of life indicators that you would be looking at to make those policies?
Well, let me start off by saying that even though I'm running for District G, and I'm going to be a district councilman, I plan to be a councilman for the entire city. I will be a fierce advocate for my district. And make no bones about it, I will fight for all the dollars I can for that. But I also know, we're not going to be able to wall ourselves off. There's not a rope we can wrap around District G. If the city goes down, District G goes down. So we need to make sure that we make decisions, not just for District G, but for the entire city. And I intend to do that. With the quality of life, I think that, you know, when we think of quality of life, everybody has their own different view and vision of it. Some people's view is being on a luxury cruise out in the Bahamas. Other people are up there skiing. Some people are just having a wonderful family barbecue in the back. I think for me, equality of life happens to be where people are happy. They, they have meaningful, valued lives, which means they have good, decent jobs, which means they have good communities. They don't live in fear, they don't have to worry about being shot while they're studying on their mother's bed. People shouldn't have to live in fear. And so I think when we talk about quality of life, I think we do need to make sure that we look at the crime issue. We need to look at mobility. Being stuck in traffic is not a quality of life issue. If you're stuck in traffic an hour each way, you're losing two hours a day. Think about all the hours you lose over a lifetime. That is not a quality of life. So I think we need to be looking at those in terms of like reverse commutes. Wonderful thing about Houston is we've got like six or seven downtowns. I say six or seven, because one downtown, I may not call downtown anymore. But, you know, the Galleria is like its own downtown, the Medical Center's like its own downtown. A lot of people, they come here, they look down our downtown Houston and go, oh, it's not that big, because they're comparing to Chicago and New York. But then we start showing them the other parts of the city, and they realize how massive and how big the city is. We have 559 square miles. That's a big city. And we've got our downtowns. The city center memorial area is becoming a downtown. Raymond Plaza was downtown. I think it's good that people can work and live there. I also think it's great if they can work there and, or live there and work out in maybe Katy. I mean, the fact is, we can do reverse commuting. We can, we can encourage people to do that by encouraging businesses to locate certain places. But I think when we talk about quality of life, that's one aspect of it. Making sure that, you know, you're home in time to see your children play that softball game or be in that play practice. Make sure you have a good job, make sure you can save for the schools or the college or what you, you want, or that trip to Bermuda with, on the, on the cruise. But also that you know that you're going to have food on the table, you can pay your electric bill, and you can pay for the AC or the heat, whichever.
Well, for an organization that's over 90 years old, the League of Women Voters loves the fact that we've begun to use technology to reach out to voters and reach out to citizens to make sure that they have all the information that they need to make an informed decision. It's also why we're interested to know how you would use technology to better serve and communicate with citizens.
Well, we're doing it now in our campaign, we'll do it in as well. First of all, I still, I still go with the old-fashioned way. I think the best is in-person. I expect to make myself, and I will make myself available throughout my, the community. You won't have to come down to City Hall to see me. I will come out to the various areas in my district and see them. So I think that's always the best way to put faces and names together, the personal touch. But with that said, you know, we've got the Twitter, we've got our website, we've got Facebook, we've got email, we've got text messaging. People will be able to text me, people will be able to email me. I don't want it to be where I'm just sending things out. To me, I want it to be a two-way conversation. In fact, a lot of times, it needs to be a one-way conversation. It needs to be where they're telling me, and I'm just listening. So I intend to do that, I expect to do that. And right now, these are all the things we have for our campaign, and we are doing that. And again, it's a two-way conversation a lot of times. A lot of times, it's a lot of people telling me what, what they're thinking. And I like to hear that, because it lets me know then what's going on in the district and the community.
Okay, so just as a follow-up on John's question, we've, we've talked a lot about the city's finances and resource allocation. So what role do you think improved technology plays, improved data plays in making better decisions in the resource allocation and financial decisions of the city?
Excellent question. You have excellent ones too, but... Here's the problem, see right now, and the city's moving towards this. Actually, I'm actually sort of impressed with it, but they got a long way to go. The website, the interaction, it's so much easier if people can get on there and find the information they need easily. Uh, I believe in transparency, number one. I believe that every decision that's being made on council needs to be on the website, I need to know all the votes. But here's more importantly, when people want to do something like start a business, they need to know, how do I start a business, what do I need? And here's the thing, is like, right now, we're having an issue with the permitting process. Permitting, a lot of people, it's not on their radar. It affects the city greatly, because it affects the contractors and developers, it affects the remodelers. I have a friend of mine who's down the street, was adding on a garage apartment. Just a garage apartment. It took them over a year, and they were out of their house for over a year. And the reason was, was the permitting process and also the inspection process. But the permitting, it was taking weeks and sometimes months to get the proper permits. And you can't start on something unless you have the proper permits. So we have an issue down there. I'd like to see that we go more digital on this, where people can submit their, their plans digitally, where they're actually able to be observed digitally instead of through the paper. I'd like it to be right now, where when you do this, you get one person you're dealing with, instead of every time you go in the permitting, you get a different person, and a different person marks it up differently. We look at this, we think it's not a big deal unless we're a developer. But the problem is, developers either have to eat that cost or they pass it on down. And they passed it down to my friend. Not all of it, but a lot of it. And so this cost of doing his garage apartment went up, because of the delays. And that's, that's just sucking money out of the economy. It's not what we need to be doing. Also, I looked at the permitting fees there, it's a whole different thing, they're, they're pretty atrocious. But the, I think that when we move more to a digital, web-based, and we can interact better with people, the more we can do with people on the web, the more information they can get, then we don't need as many people picking up the phone, answering their calls, or what's happening now. Basically, send them to this person, that person, that person, they get their runaround. Because when people look to the city, they want an answer. And I don't understand why the city just can't give the people an answer. I mean, we are servants, if we, public servants are servants. And they need to serve the public. And if they're not willing to do that, they shouldn't be involved in that.
Well, we, I think everybody wants the, their elected representatives to serve them more and to be more focused on service, even the, even the ones that they consider great. So it's, it's comforting to hear that. As a candidate for city council, I'd like to know what your position is on term limits?
I support term limits.
Do you support keeping them in their current form?
Well, that's what we're going to get to. I support term limits. I do not like the current form. I like, I would rather have it be, and it's on the ballot, two four-year terms. But I'll actually go one more further than this. I've been saying this for years. A lot of times, you lose good people, and I understand the reason for term limits, because you also get people in there that are not good, but they get in there and they just get stuck in there. And it's just, they're there. But I think if you've served well, and if you sit out for a term or two, so if you served for eight years and then sat out for eight years, if you're good enough that people want you back in, then you should be able to be back in. If you're not, well, then you shouldn't be, and you won't have the power of the office to, or the power of incumbency to win them. So it takes out the power of incumbency, but allows somebody who has actually good, like an Eleanor Tinsley type, or someone on that line, to come back into office if they were to choose, choose to do so. But that's not what's on the ballot. I support what's on the ballot. I'm not planning on, if I ran and I won, I've, I've got my six years or my eight years. There's no higher office for me. And I'm not planning on running for city council down the road if somebody were to change it. And I won't be running for mayor, like every city councilman does.
Well, you might, that might be your plan now, but if something happens, I think, around that horseshoe.
You know, I'm too old for that, and there's other things to do, like there's a lot of fishing to be done. fishing to be done. So I want to fix the city, have a good life, and go fishing. Isn't that the right life? Isn't that the quality of life?
That sounds like quality of life, yes. Go fishing. My husband would absolutely agree with that plan. So we've been talking sort of more specifically on a broad-stroke question I'd like to ask you. So Houston has now surpassed even New York City in being the most diverse city in the country, which has incredible opportunities and also some challenges that go along with it. So can you tell me, what do you see as the value in Houston's diversity, and how can the city capitalize on the fact that it is so very diverse?
Well, again, Houston, I don't think Houston started off trying to be diverse, it just became diverse. Became diverse because of, it's, I hate to say land of opportunity, it sounds hokey, but it really is of the opportunity. People came here because they could make a living, they could succeed, and they could develop and build something. So I'm not saying that we set out to make it diverse, it just became diverse. And the diversity, you're right, is excellent. I can attest to that. When I, when I travel, when you travel abroad, there's not a whole lot of diversity in certain places, not only with the people, but with the cuisine. I don't have to leave Houston in order to have some of the best cuisine in the world. And I can actually travel the world in Houston eating the cuisine, whether it's the Indian food, whether it's, you know, we are a little bit lax on French food, but Italian food, Mexican food, you know, this is, we have the diversity when it comes to the cuisine. But we have it also with the people. And I think it's interesting, the way they interact. In fact, I think, here's the deal, we as Houston are an example for the rest of the world. Think about it. We have Muslims, Jews, Christians, Hindus living, and the only thing they're worried, near each other, and the only thing they're worried about is whether you mowed your yard, okay? We're not having issues or fights like they have in other parts of the city, or, no, city, in parts of the world. If you look at what's going on in Europe right now, there's a huge issue with the mass migrations there. We're not having those issues. People might be concerned about the illegal immigration coming up from our southern border, but we're not sitting there shooting each other for these reasons. We're not sitting there attacking each other for these reasons. The crime is crime, but it's not a crime based upon diversity. We have people who are living together in a melting pot, and I think that's a good example for the rest of the world.
Well, speaking of diversity, one of the things that is most vibrant and reflects our diversity in the city is that we do have a really wonderful theater and museum districts. But we've also been criticized, the city is not doing enough to support small arts organizations and independent artists. If you were elected, what would you do to make sure that there was a well-rounded, thriving arts community?
Well, let's back up a little bit. I'm not so sure about that part about we're not doing enough. I say this for this reason, the mayor took 85 million from the hotel occupancy tax and put it towards the arts. She just took it and put it there, not to the streets, not to the drains, she just took it and put it to the arts. That's a lot of money. So if somebody says, we're not doing enough, again, I'm not a believer that putting money somewhere solves a problem. But there's 85 million that's going from the hotel occupancy tax that she took. She got an award for it. I think she should have gotten an award for it. You know, to me, the prettiest sight, the prettiest art is a well-paved street, okay? When I drive down a smooth street, that's art, okay? With that said, I enjoy small theaters. I don't go downtown to the Alley Theatre that often. I do go on occasion. I'm not one who likes to fight the traffic. I actually go out to the theaters out in my area. There's a lot of small, little playhouse theaters where we actually are sitting from here to you, as far from the stage. That's it. It's more personal, there's maybe about 60 or 40 people in the audience. I've seen some of the best plays there. What I like about that, I would like the city to promote those more, because a lot of people don't know they exist. I mean, you have to open up the Houston Press to find them, and even then, they're not there. And, you know, if you don't know these arts areas exist in your community, you won't know, go to them. And I think the city can do that on their website. That's one of the things that we can do, is promote these small groups and give them a voice, give them some exposure. Same thing go for artists. You know, if an artist wants to do a show, you know, I like going to art shows. My father taught art, he was actually an art teacher. I like, I like going to art shows. I like the best ones when you go to these old houses, and they have them, and you got your little glass of wine, and you walk around, and you get to see the art, art you wouldn't see anywhere else. Art that you, you didn't even know existed, and then you get to meet the artist. I think that's pretty cool. I buy my art that way. So I think that should be promoted. I think these are things, again, that the city doesn't have to necessarily fund and give money to them. These are entrepreneurs, they just need exposure. People need to know where they are, so that on a Saturday or a Friday or on a Thursday, somebody says, what do you want to do tonight? And somebody says, hey, let's go to this art show. Where'd you find it? I found it on the city website. Boom.
Great. Well, we have time for another question before we do some wrap-up remarks. And so we've talked a lot about the economy and quality of life, and what I'm curious about, we've seen several of our other large cities in the country raise the minimum wage as, in terms of a quality of life issue, trying to improve the quality of life. I'm curious whether you support raising the minimum wage?
I do not. I'm not a fan of the minimum wage. I pay higher than the minimum wage. I believe in market forces, I believe in the free market. I think that you should pay somebody what they're worth, and some people who are starting out, who are 17, 18-year-olds, have no skill, sometimes they don't even show up, you know? So they're working for places, maybe at McDonald's or some places, their first job. These are the people that, and I know everybody says, oh, no, it's some 50-year-old person that has two kids to support. If you're 50 years old and you're still on minimum wage, you haven't learned a skill in 30 years. I don't know how to help you then. But most of the people, and about 75% of the people that are on minimum wage, are minimum wage are the younger people, first jobs. Well, I gotta tell you, whenever you hire somebody, I hire a first-year lawyer, guess what, I lose money on them, okay? Because they might have gone to law school, but they don't know how necessarily to do the law, so we write off more than we get. It goes for anybody who's their first job. And I think when you do the minimum wage, it allows you to hire people that you might not otherwise hired. Because if you're going to pay 10 or 15 dollars, then what you're going to do is you're probably going to go do automation, and then that person doesn't get a job, and they don't get the skill, and they can't move up. One of my first jobs was being a swing-shift manager trainee at McDonald's. It paid 10 cents or more an hour than just a regular employee. But I got it because I started off as a regular employee, and then they made me within a week, swing-shift manager trainee. What did that mean? Well, it meant I worked the late shift. But it was 10 cents an hour more. But I didn't aspire to just be at minimum wage. I wanted to be beyond that. Within a couple of months, I was beyond minimum wage, and it helped pay me my way through school, in addition to dock working, selling refrigerators, and everything else I did. But you need, you need to have this place to start, so you can develop your skills and get into the habit of going to the office, showing up on time, doing the job, and being a reliable employee.
Well, we are now at the end of our hour, so what I'd like to do is provide you with about a minute to address the audience that might be watching at home, and tell them why you think they should vote for you.
Well, if they want the same, if you want the same, I'm not the person. If you want to stay the course and allow the city to deteriorate, that's not me. I am the outsider. I've received the, and I'm proud of this, I've received the endorsements of the Greater Houston Builders Association, the American Council for Engineering Companies, as well as the Houston Association of Realtors. I'm receiving all the business endorsements, because the business people know what the city needs to run. If we want to drain the swamp at City Hall, if we want to have the transparency, and if